All right, I'm gonna call us back into regular session. This is the meeting of the school committee, September 7th, 2023, returning to executive session. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to hear the meeting may do so on their televisions by turning to Comcast 99 or Verizon 28, or www.northandovercam.org. In-person attendance of the public is permitted. Do I need to read all of this anymore? No? Okay. All right, so we are back in public session. Is there anyone here for public comment in the room? Oh, my goodness. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the just full liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. Now, let me just double-check. Well, first, is there anyone in the room from the public who wishes to comment? Hearing none, seeing none. Let me just check again, make sure no one's written me. Nope, I have no new emails. All right, so that is it for public comment. First item beyond that is consent items, approval of the minutes from June 22nd, 2023, and August 15th.
So, Mr. Chair, I will move to approve the minutes of June 22nd and August 15th collectively.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion needed?
I will just note there is a spelling error on Chair Brown's on the August 15th. At 12:30.
Oh, Brownie.
Nothing significant.
Okay. So, we need to officially...
I'm sure that can be corrected.
That can be corrected.
Pretty easily.
Yeah, all right.
Probably already...
Michelle probably already is.
Oh, Michelle Brownie, I see. Well, I've been called that before, so it doesn't, not a problem. Call it worse. So, can we, so any other discussion? So, can move the motion then? We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. McDevit, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
And Mr. Brown votes yes, and Ms. Pacharsky is not going to be here tonight, so it passes 4-0. All right, next, the fun part of the meeting, the student representative reports, and there are three of you now.
Yes, all right. My name is Ben Abbott. I'm a senior at the high school. Happy to be back for the summer. We're five days into the school year. It's been a hot start. The air conditioning is keeping up as best it can at the high school. The freshmen are settling as well. We have a couple of sports. There's soccer tonight, boy soccer. It was delayed because of the heat. Girl soccer as well tonight. Varsity swim is tomorrow. Field hockey away Saturday. Girls volleyball is next Tuesday, and cross country is home next Wednesday, and football is home next Friday. Guidance is holding lunch meetings with the senior class in preparation for the application process next week, and the Spanish exchange is arriving on Sunday. I personally have a Spanish exchange student coming to stay with me, so I'm excited for that. It'll be a fun 10 days meeting them.
Hi, my name is Cece Choi. So, right now at school, a lot of people are talking about homecoming, which I think is going to be October 6th. So, right now, student council and the senior class board are working really hard to make homecoming as fun as it was last year. Last year, I think we had about a little less than 1,000 students enter homecoming, so they're trying to make it as fun as it was last year. And with homecoming that week is going to be the school spirit week. So, right now, student council has an open survey for students to fill out for their dress-up day ideas and just to vote on what they would like.
Hi, and I'm Harper, and with the start of the school year, clubs are beginning to hold introductory meetings, and in the next couple of weeks are preparing for the club fair. And open house is the 14th of September, and parents will go through their kids' schedules to meet their teachers and discuss their classes.
All right.
Can I ask you something, Ben? So, Ben Abbott had a chance this summer to present at the superintendent's conference to all the superintendents in the state of Massachusetts. He was one of the main speakers. Do you want to just talk a little bit about that and your work with 351, because that was certainly impressive?
Sure. So, I'm part of an organization called Project 351. It's a statewide thing that aims to empower specifically eighth-grade leaders from across the state, one from each of the towns. And I had the opportunity to go on as an alumni and kind of lead ambassadors and encourage them to continue their lifelong commitment to service. And I was invited to attend the Mass State Superintendent Conference on the Cape over the summer to speak about service and different issues in Massachusetts public schools. And it was, I was interviewed along with two other Project 351 alumni by the Secretary of Education, Massachusetts, Pat Tutwiler. And it was a great conversation on different issues that are present in the schools, and I spoke specifically about the importance of celebrating service and leadership. It was great, and I saw Dr. Gilligan there and Dr. Mealy as well, so it was nice.
I had the opportunity to then spend, he was a little more exciting with his topics, so I got a chance to spend time with him and a student from Sandwich and one from Abington. And it was really a great conversation, and I appreciated it, and I just thought it was important to recognize that work. It's awful hard for a superintendent to get up in front of, you know, I don't know how many superintendents, but probably close to 300 at the conference, plus all the assistant superintendents. I mean, it was big at Mashpee High School. And you did a tremendous job.
Thank you.
I value your input, your insight, so thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Great job representing...
Highlight of your summer, right?
It's up there, right?
Yeah, it was great.
Is there a date yet for the club fair? I think that'd be something that'd be interesting for, to maybe go and see how diverse the groups are and how they're spreading that.
So, we're planning the club fair to be towards the end of September. We don't have a specific date as of right now.
And you can keep us updated.
Yeah.
Is it usually during school day?
Uh, yes, yeah, during the lunch period.
Well, welcome to the two new members, right? I knew we were gonna have to. That's great. So, Cece over Cece.
Yep.
Nice to meet you and see you here, and welcome to Harper. All right, great, thanks.
I have one question for Ben, because it was after our last meeting, the last time you were here. How was history day presenting? I know, I'm persistent and annoying. I know that, but how'd it go?
It was great, yeah. So, it was, I guess, three, two other current seniors, McKenna Doobie and Patricia Voe, and we went down to Washington DC and presented our project on Vietnam War photography. And it was great. It was four days, I believe. We met kids from all over, all 50 states and the American territories and a couple international communities. We learned a lot of history, went to a couple museums, specifically like the National Indian Museum in DC was really cool. It was a lot of fun. Awesome.
What was the exhibit again?
It was on Vietnam War-era photography and the impact it made on the public. So, unlike public perception of the war and of government.
Yeah, there are some iconic sad photographs from that area, yep. Cool, all right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, welcome.
Well, welcome to the new folks. Welcome back, Ben. Thank you for representing North Andover so well at the superintendent's conference and actually at the other event you just described.
You got the message about tomorrow, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sure they didn't miss that one. So, you guys, welcome to stay, but you probably have homework and other things you want to do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent's report, sir.
All right, so I won't bury the lead. You know, given the conditions that we've experienced over the past couple of days and the forecast for tomorrow, we're implementing a half-day for the North Andover Public Schools. I want folks to know that I don't do this lightly, make this decision lightly. We've had hotter days in the past, and we've had hotter days, we'll probably have more in the future, but the combination of the heat, the increase of humidity tonight and over that period of time of the last couple of days, and the fact that the conditions aren't allowing us to cool off at night, really led to us saying, what makes the most sense? We had some high temperatures today. We've been monitoring the heat index, relative humidity, and I've been working with Cheryl Bazak to keep an eye on that. And we just haven't had a chance for the schools to cool down, and this is extended another day. So, it'll be a half-day with dismissal at Ann Brad Street at 12, elementary schools at 11:50, middle school at 11:05, high school at 11, and we're doing something a little different that was in the message tonight. Community programs will run Kid Stop at all the schools until 3:00 PM for those parents who do it normally. We don't have those activities in the afternoon. And food services will be providing a grab-and-go lunch for all students. So, that is probably a surprise, usually when there's some type of school release or no school for snow. That's the first thing students talk about, but we're there. All right, so we opened school, and Dr. Mealy, if you just want to hit, we had a good opening of school. It was great to have Ms. Koenig at opening day to speak on behalf of Dave. He was not able to attend, was out of the country. But we opened up school. It was really so exciting to see all the kids. Here we are at Thompson, next slide. Mr. Raymond, like, you know, we have to teach kids everything, so it's not just yelling and math. We teach them how to go to recess, how to go through the lunch line, all the things that they might not know or they may have forgotten. You know, there's Mr. Raymond teaching them how to get lunch. This was just awesome. The Atkinson School gym over the summer with the help of the Booster Club and Dr. Mealy, they redid the floor. It's probably one of the nicest floors I've seen. And Coach D had it really, had them really going. Go ahead, Jim. Same with the sergeant. The sergeant floor was done over. Again, with the help of the Booster Club, it came out terrific at the Sergeant School. Next slide, Jim. Middle school, it was, it was great, and there's Mr. Gonzales and the central office, the office folks. So, we got a chance on that first day, myself and Jim and Pam Lathrop to visit all the schools. And then NAHS, this is really cool. This is Allison Looney. She teaches graphic design, and we took the old TV studio that used to be down. You know, it's down by the band up against the glass, and Dr. Mealy worked with Mr. Jackson and Allison to turn that into a design lab, and it has two components. One is she wouldn't let me in the other room because it's not completely finished yet, but they have the design lab, which she was just having deals about, and the kids love it. This picture here, I actually said, guys, I want to take your picture. Please make it look like you're doing something. And they did. All right, next slide. Got to go to Franklin School, and the same thing on the first day. They're taking everyone through the routines. I'd have to commend the custodians all the summer. You know, some of these older schools, you know, they're getting up there, and the work they do to make them clean and good and welcoming, just terrific. The NAHS ambassadors, they were really helpful with the freshmen on opening day. They had, you know, they came in and they helped bring the freshmen around. And if you haven't been to the high school, I mean, it's three, over, I think it's about 315,000 square feet. It's a big building, and they were awesome. Next. And then the Ann Brad Street Early Childhood Center staff, you know, that's the CAFET gymatorium. You know, this is one of the professional development days. We're gonna talk a little bit more about that tonight. They had a clap-in at Atkinson, you know, some of the schools do clap out in fifth grade. They did a clap-in for the first graders.
Nice.
Yep, and it wouldn't be opening day without Mr. Clark with some type of video, but he was really excited. He got them going, and that school was in good shape on that first day.
He's just looking for an excuse to wear that shirt.
Possibly. Joe does a great job with student engagement, family engagement. And next.
That's it?
That's it.
Yeah.
So, the opening was great, and I'm gonna move to a quick staffing update, and then I'm gonna have Jim talk about some summer projects. There was some remarkable stuff that happened this summer. You know, I'm gonna have Jim talk about it because it should be celebrated. But staffing update, we are fully staffed across all schools with the exception of we had a last-minute person leave the high school in special education. So, we really have 1.6 special education positions that we're working for now. Marcy, you want to talk about that a little bit?
And we are having posted the 1-point, the full-time position test. We're posted for quite a bit. We've had a couple of really successful, more than a couple of really successful positions. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, there's a lot of opening for special education around the state, so we're in an unusual situation, one that I've all the schools, the high school hasn't faced in many years. So, we're continuing that search, really actively seeking out through colleges, through our some of the local agencies trying to fill those positions. So, we hope those families who are impacted by that have been notified. We do have some subs and some TEs who are working on their license, but in the meantime, we continue to actively look to fill those positions. Those families impacted, those students have been notified, and as always in those situations, we work no individual compensatory service plans for those families. So, it is, it is a tough situation and one that we don't like to be in. And in other years, you know, I'd probably sit here and say I'm super optimistic that we'll have those filled pretty quickly, but this year is feeling a little, is feeling a little bit different than that because just through our local chats, our many schools that are in, I mean, really dire positions in terms of special education staffing, I don't feel like we are that way. We attract really, really amazing candidates, so it's hard to work.
We have some good leads. We're posted on school spring. We're on Indeed. We've reached out to all the colleges. I've called every network I have, through Boston College, through the Superintendent's Association, and we've got some promising leads, so they're making, Marcy's done a great job with Mr. Jackson and Paula Sexton to make some adjustments to pick up services with existing staff. But I think what Marcy said, especially that is you start to see that trend across the state where those are really difficult to fill. And I think they've got a good interim plan. I'm looking forward to getting someone on board, hopefully next week, so.
Question on that?
Hmm?
Did, did we have people turn us down, made offers for those candidates, and they turned us down?
Yes.
Yep. And so, we had, we had some really good candidates, and I think one of them, it was geographic, just the, you know, they weren't from this area. And so, they probably had a job, they had a job that was very similar, and then another one, it came down to money, so.
How many families, what do you want to talk to?
There are a few small groups. I mean, I'd have to get the exact number. I would say, I think the total was 19 students. Yeah, so, again, we are, we're pretty diligent in keeping up. I mean, we have, in, we're trying to hold on to the fact that it'll be filled rather soon, but we do have some alternate kind of plans in place to discuss with families, like offering some services after school to compensate for some of the learning that's not happening, offering some tutoring sessions, so offering some of those services for people who want to take advantage of those after school. So, that's kind of the next stage, is trying to develop those compensatory plans that are happening now so we can start working on some of those skills now, instead of waiting for them all to build up.
And the other, we have a few, this is pretty common. The one area we typically have a couple of things is teaching assistants. So, we have those posted as well, but that's usually powerful course for us to...
Yeah, in pretty good shape with that, too.
In good shape with that coming along, so. Thank you, Marcy. I appreciate it. Moving along to summer projects, I'm gonna let Jim Mealy tell the story, because there's some good stuff to set down.
Yeah, so we had our planned projects and then the not planned projects. And it's certainly a way to celebrate the relationships we've built over the years with some of our vendors, that they were able to happen. Dr. Gilligan mentioned the converting the CAM studio to graphic design, and that was planned and went really well. The paint crew that we have, especially John Frye, Muth and Bill Smith, who have been with us for years, they do a great job. But then, a couple of weeks before school is supposed to start, I get a knock at my door from the building inspector, Paul Hutchins, and the fire chief, John Ware, and Paul says, Jim, do you want the bad news or the really bad news? And I'm like, all right, I'll take the bad news. And he said, you can't open Atkinson. And I said, what's the really bad news? And he said, well, it's the same. So, I kind of channeled Gene from Apollo 13 and said, that's not an option. And we worked together and figured out, okay, what do we need to do, and they were great to work with. But our vendor stepped up. We got an emergency waiver from the state. A vendor came in, Accolade, and sealed everything off and got all the tile picked up, because basically what happened at Atkinson during that flood that we had in town, that was the most damaged. Our storeroom is over there, and some of our custodial products got damaged, but the water came right down the first-floor corridor, and that's asbestos tile because of the age of the building, not surprising. The tile gets under there, the tile starts to curl up, and then when it dries, it's brittle and it breaks. And now, you've exposed, it's exposed as opposed to perfectly safe any other time. So, it's gotta be replaced, and that's what they were talking about. But Accolade came in, removed it. RPF came in and tested, you're good. And then Atkinson Flooring, coincidentally for being Atkinson School, came in and put in a new corridor floor, and it was done in eight days, which was unbelievable, and obviously we were able to open.
Yeah, Jim, it was remarkable. I mean, we've, we got this news because what they had been doing is with the damage around town, it was significant, and we had flooding where we've never had flooding before. And so, when we got that news, that day, I said, Jim, oh, boy, what do, this is, that's not good news. And the next day, Jim got, Jim and the town, working together, got a waiver from the state to get this contractor on board. I got a local waiver and got them in, and it would have been a long-term project anyway. We had done, replaced the tiles upstairs in the past as part of the capital project. This is something we were going to do, and it probably would have been safe for this year, but we didn't want to take any chances. We had the opportunity to do it. Jim did it, him and his team, and big thanks to Paul Hutchins and Steve Foster and John Mullin and Doug Spate, the custodian over at Atkinson. Really awesome, awesome job. And I don't know who picked the colors, and I think it must have been Erin O'Loughlin, the principal, because the colors are really nice.
They match nice. Yeah, and the other one was the middle school, well, where we, we were planning on, and Joe will talk about the middle school project, but we were planning on extending the road that the buses go. They go to the left of the middle school and then rejoin the line to go up the hill to the A, B, C, C. Right at the beginning of the project, they said, we're not gonna be able to do that road. So, now we gotta go to Plan B and have the buses and cars both go around the back of the middle school, so you have two lanes. And if you've ever been to the back of the middle school, one, Mr. McDevit will be very happy. Nobody is gonna be able to park.
Excellent.
I want it back. But there were two jet-outs. There's a fire hydrant about halfway over, and then as you get to the end, there was another one. So, we got Riley. He came in, did a great job, took those out, and it's allowing us to navigate the two lanes behind the building, and it's worked so far, and they did it in record time again. So, it's really important to develop those relationships, and they pay off when you need them.
So, now it's two lanes of traffic only in the back there, no more parking, is that what you're saying?
No, there's still, there's still the parking spaces. There were people who would park along the side of the road.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would just say, you know, I'm, you know, my first year as superintendent, like, eight days into it, we had the gas explosions. We also had none of the site work done at the Brad Street yet. We were over that building quite a bit and doing a lot of work, but I, you know, on the first day of kindergarten this week, at 8:35, you know, drop-offs at 8:20 to 8:35, there was no traffic. I went right into the middle school. That was one of the last ones through, and the traffic didn't back up till about the dumpster on the corner. So, Jim's been over there every day directing traffic. Greg Landry's been helping out. Bob DiMario, the custodian at the Ann Brad Street, and the staff have been really wonderful. And I'm cautiously optimistic that people are getting routines down. But you have to remember, when school opens, it takes typically three to four weeks for people to kind of find their rhythm, you know, especially around town. Like, I've been noticing the folks who might not be coming downtown. There'd been, there'd been traffic going out towards the youth center in the morning. So, but it will settle down, and on opening day, we have a few late buses, but not late as compared to what we've seen in the past. And again, that's about relationships. Jim worked really hard with North Riding Transportation, you know, and we're staffed. We have all of our buses running, and neighboring towns, and I won't mention what they are, they're short dozens of bus drivers, so they're really in a jam, and there's no one in the pipeline. So, we're fortunate that Jim has those relationships, works with NRT, and Lucy does a really good job. I know that a lot of folks call Lucy, and just any of the public that you're watching. She does the best she can. When something's gonna be late, she'll call the folks on that bus. We have the ability to do that, letting folks know, and it will settle down, and, but I'm really pleased with the, I was very worried with the kindergarten traffic and the preschool.
Yeah, just so people know, one of the things that Lucy does right at the beginning is really closely monitor the routes, and if a bus is running late, she might take a couple, a stop or two off of that bus and put it on another bus. Doing, you know, maybe early, so she kind of evens it all out, and it takes a couple of weeks for it to settle down, but that's what she's working on.
Dr. Man, just a quick question. The change of traffic pattern behind the middle school, has there been any issues with the ABEC breakfast club drop-off in that issue mixing in with the buses and the middle school traffic because of the change?
So, no, and it's not any different. I mean, obviously, every year, there are new parents, for the most part, who haven't been through it and they have to learn the process, but everything else is the same. The only change is that the buses are coming along the back with the cars instead of joining them. But then, once they get there, the process is exactly the same as it's been.
All right. You know, in some other summer projects, it was really nice. I was up at Franklin on the first day. They redid the CAF floor, and they used the same colors they had at the Atkinson. So, this has been some really good work. I think that our custodians are really unsung heroes in this district. They always go above and beyond and get things done, and they're, they're terrific people. One of the things on opening day is we get a chance to celebrate the folks who have done 30 years in North Andover, and so we got to celebrate Tanya DeSelli from the Franklin School. We got to celebrate Jeannie Karen in her 30th year at the Sergeant School. We got to celebrate Todd Workman. This is Todd's 30th year as the custodian at, for North Andover, and he's at the middle school now. And who was the last one? Off the top of your head? Oh, there was one more. All right, it'll come to me. I'll bring it back later in the meeting. But just my point about Todd being 30 years, you know, Todd is, our custodians are more than just custodians. They are, you know, they have a kind word in the hall. They, you know, kids, they interact with kids in a way that is a really good thing for North Andover, a good relationship, so.
One more, one more testament to our staff. I got a call. I was down outside the Performance Center trying to direct traffic, and I get a call from Tiffany Goddard. Jim, Car Rider Pro is down, and this is the first day for pickup of the kindergarten students. And we got IT over there, but there was no way they were gonna get it up and running. And the staff went out and they started taking names like they used to, and they're running in the heat from, I think I saw Carol was the runner, Carol Marshall, going from, you know, taking those names and bringing them in to get these students out there, and it went as smooth as any other first day I've seen.
That's awesome.
So, that's that. So, you know, Pam Lathrop came down six, an hour ago. This is our first big event here, so we gotta do a really quick overview of, like, we did opening day, just kind of a 30,000-foot view going down around what we're doing with our professional development, what some of the curriculum work we've been doing. It's been really exciting. I'm really proud of our teachers. But tonight, they were going to be part of the presentation, too. I'd like to introduce Carol Lockham. She's our STEM director, and this is Ms. Kristin Ando, and she is our Humanities Director here in North Andover for all levels. And so, again, I think back to my first year as assistant superintendent. I think I had an MCAS slideshow. There was like 91 slides. I might have overdone it. Pam had quite a few slides tonight, and we peered it down a little bit. So, this is an overview, and we will have people back throughout the course of the year to hit on some of these topics in more in-depth presentations, so without further ado.
And so, yes, so we hope we represent Pam well. We're so happy to have her. And so, here we are with teaching and learning, and you can, to represent our teaching and learning and the work that's happened in late spring and over the summer. So, my job is to represent ELA, and so over the past three years, we've had different FOKI as far as the big three being around foundational skills, the shifts in the Common Core. And this year, we have three teacher leadership teams that are leading some ELA work, and so this continues what we're doing. So, we have a team that's an implementation team, an assessment team, and a resource team. And so, really excited about that work. We had, will you go to the next one for me, Jim? This summer, we had, and so the idea of like these three teams that are representing and tied to our strategic plan of consistent rigorous curriculum equity for all students in targeted professional practice. And so, we worked a lot with teachers in the late spring and during the summer around our ELA work. In spring of 2023, we had about 120 teachers come and work with us through this executive summary through an organization called Unbound Ed with the essential question about alignment curriculum and appropriate instructional supports driving equity for students. During the summer, we had about 50 teacher leaders and our entire leadership team, which is about 30 people, work with these resources that are pictured in the middle to talk about holding integrity to high-quality curriculum materials and how that will benefit students. And then another really exciting ELA project we had this summer was a summer academy where students entering grades one through entering grade six came in for four full days of instruction in order to do some knowledge building for the unit that they were going to start in September. And so, to get a leg up, you know, or a head start, running start. And Ms. Broderick gave me permission to show this picture of her and her, some of her fifth-grade students who did some work on indigenous people this summer in order to start the fifth-grade unit. did some work on Indigenous people this summer in order to start the fifth grade unit with a little bit of a head start.
Great. So lots of different work, again, across the board. I'm going to share with you a few of some of the big overarching trends and, and topics that we worked on. So one is an update to our district curriculum accommodation plan, which is now live on the website. We spent some time with our administrators during our retreat, sharing the new document, giving them a chance to get familiar with it, review the why behind it, and that same session will be done at all of the schools throughout this fall. So just a couple snapshots of the slides that we did with them, both to plan for viewing the D cap and also planning for that professional development. Another PD that we organized in a similar fashion with our elementary and middle school administrators and elementary teacher leaders was on NWA's MAP assessment. So we've all presented, we've shared bits and, and info about that in the last few years. This was another opportunity for them to dive into their data, get familiar with a few updates of the site and both reflect back on last year and plan ahead. So we had the group that came in with us on the twenty-second, kind of prepared. We went through it together. So again, along that lines of consistency, they all went out to schools and presented this to the rest of the educators in the schools on opening days. And then at the end of that, they did a exit ticket survey and will use that data to plan for ongoing professional development on MAP testing throughout the year. Ah, yes. You'll, you'll get really familiar when we come back and present some data for you, some exciting data. So MAP is, stands for Measure of Academic Progress. Thank you. And it's MAP growth because one of the, I think, most exciting to me is that we're always monitoring the growth that students have as they continue to take the assessment. They start in kindergarten. Our kindergartners all the way up through eighth grade take it three times a year in the fall, the winter and the spring. And educators get the data the very next day, which I think is really beneficial. We don't need to wait on it like MCAS, for example, where we don't know those results for a little while. So it's very actionable data that we use to also progress monitor. So speaking of our facilitators of collaborative inquiry, our elementary FCI's for short. We meet with them once a month as a team. It's a great way. We have two representatives from each of our K eight, uh, K five schools, sorry. And we've been working with them the last few years really on a lot of kind of separate projects. So they are tasked with helping teachers with SD math, Lexia Core Five reading. Those are both digital supplements that we use. So they are kind of the, the core leaders, the champions in their building, running different. They did a March Madness or March Mathness actually in the spring. So ways to really boost engagement and excitement around those two programs. They're also kind of our, our core group to help lead the initiatives with MAP growth. They also spend some time with our consultant from Lynch Leadership Academy and doing some data analysis protocols and bringing that work back to their schools. So we had some sessions with them and we'll continue to meet with them throughout the year to keep moving that. We keep joking, Ben Cabrera, who is our, our third director, our math director, who couldn't be here tonight. He, he came up with this great analogy that they're really like the sous chefs. They're really in that middle because they are teachers. They're using this for their own practice and their students, but then they also have that leadership role. So they kind of can step outside of their classroom and really bring some perspective to us on how things are going. So as we develop these different professional development sessions, they are such a great voice for us to troubleshoot and kind of run through them together. And it also brings that consistency back to the buildings. We've since January, so we run different optional PDs. We put out pretty much in the fall, we do another round, winter into spring that takes us through the rest of the spring. And then we send out some options in the summer. So we pulled some just quick data since January of twenty twenty-three, we've had a hundred seventy-seven educators enroll in some of these optional sessions, which we think was, it was a pretty nice number that they're really taking advantage of that. The top row shows a few of the book studies that we've done that are guided by some of us in the district. The middle row are some book studies that are asynchronous. So teachers have some opportunity to do that on their own schedule and complete some work. And in the bottom are a couple of different modules, again, that are asynchronous through Pairdeck and Google Classroom that they can complete on their own. So hopefully we'll continue to increase that number as we go forward and add more opportunities. We'll be coming up with a new round soon. So I'm going to share, hopefully I can do this justice. Pam was going to do this section, this session that was created by Ben, who I mentioned couldn't be here. So we're really excited that we have started the calculus project in the district. And this slide shows the founding members that brought this together. It's a grassroots effort that started, I think Brookline, I believe, was the first district in the state to initiate this project. And its goal is really to increase the number of our students of color and low income that are taking advanced math classes. The next slide. So we have some data here. This is the calculus project's data. And I want to point out to you that top right-hand corner, that seventy percent of students who participate in this program enroll in AP classes by their senior year. So it really does increase the likelihood of them continuing to build their math abilities and access to AP courses. If you can click again, our current numbers, so looking at students right now, we have roughly sixty-one percent of all of our high school students completing advanced math courses. But if you look at our subgroups, that number is not consistent among them. And so the goal is that we should, by providing this opportunity to students and encouragement, we're hoping that those numbers will continue to increase. So hopefully all of our subgroups will be closer to that seventy percent and perhaps higher taking advanced math classes. So, yeah.
Super quick. So how, can you go back one slide? So the program's starting this year.
Yes.
And so are we expected to see results at the end of this year or is it two years because you're doing eleventh and twelfth grade?
So it's actually even further. So the first group that started, actually slip to the next slide, Jim.
Sorry.
We started, that's okay. Great question. We started with, so the program starts with rising eighth graders. So this summer we had ten seventh, uh, rising eighth graders, currently eighth graders participate in the summer academy. So that's one factor of the project is getting students in over the summer. They spent three weeks. Our cohort actually traveled to UMass Lowell and were on campus. They were also with some students from Lowell, but had a dedicated class that all ten of them were together in the same session and Ben was directing the project out there. And so we had ten this year. It was kind of a very fast rollout. So there were a few more that were interested and unfortunately just couldn't make the, the timeline work for the three works, the, the three weeks. And so those students are now in a group of algebra together at the middle school. And so they have that support network of knowing each other this summer. They did not learn calculus this summer. They were prepared, pre-exposed to some of the algebra content that they'd see this summer to build up their confidence and understanding before diving into the school year. So much like our acceleration academies have done in the past. And so the idea is that same group will continue to have this opportunity over the summer. And throughout the school year, they will have an academic center. So sessions, I believe it's going to be Monday, Wednesday, Friday after school, where they'll meet with middle school teacher and have the opportunity to get some tutoring and support throughout the year. As they move up in this model, they will be able to become peer teachers and kind of give back to the group. And we'll continue to add new cohorts. And so the, the goal is that now that we have this up and running, invitations will go out to the current seventh graders and eighth graders. So we can expand that group of ten next summer and then we'll keep adding. So we'll keep reaching out to seventh graders and then they'll continue through this program as they move up to, again, hopefully AP calculus classes and, and advanced math classes.
This is important work. I think. None of us would want to be judged necessarily on how we were taking on math in eighth grade. But it certainly impacts how you do down the line in the courses that are available. So it's important. We believe that all kids can achieve at high levels and this is just another tool, way to target and do that. So.
Do you have any cost to the students to participate in this?
No cost to the students. So we have some, I believe it's mostly grant funding through the calculus project that helped supported it. And I don't know, I'm not sure if either of you know off the top of your head if, if we also are purchasing some of that. But that's, Ben did a great job of advocating and getting familiar with the program. We've met with Dr. Sims is the person who founded it and really getting that up and running. So it was a lot of logistics, really quick. We like to do these acceleration, these academies, you know, in like record time. So again, it was a very fast opportunity that came up in the spring and he was, did a great job in making that work.
And I'd be remiss if we didn't mention Ms. Marks. She's, she's the one who, it was the impetus to get this started.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
It was just the end of the.
Those, those were our slides. I probably left out some details that Ben, I think one thing I do want to point out, it was on that last slide, is part of this. And we know in the areas of STEM, especially if you can't see yourself in STEM, you're not as likely to be STEM. My own daughter had a, had a great fourth grade homework last night was, a scientist is. And I was like waiting and, and trying to see, is she going to, you know, make your typical, unfortunately male is the, the typical role model. And she actually drew a female scientist. So I, I felt good as a, as a chemist mom, that, that made my heart. I was, I was like waiting to see. But, so we know that students are more likely to engage in the STEM fields if they can see themselves. And so a part of the calculus project is also raising that awareness and showing, you know, modeling for these students to really have pride in their own backgrounds and having role models for them to see themselves, you know, as scientists and mathematicians. And really that, that this is a, a great possibility for them and how competent and capable they are to achieve it.
That's great. I'll, I'll note that at least the area, engineering schools in Boston area are all making a point of increasing their enrollments, minorities and women. And several of them have hit or exceeded the fifty percent.
Couple of questions. Sorry. It's, it's important work to do in regards to the calculus project because it's the right thing to do for students, to make sure everyone has opportunities and that's first and foremost. When we talk about advanced coursework, it does mean something very specific when it comes to our accountability measures as a school system. What exactly does that mean when we say advanced coursework?
Good question. Desi has identified certain classes. So I believe, and I'd have to, I can go back and double check that it includes any of the APs, I think AP math, AP, AP calculus, AP statistics. We have a lot of students take that. We also have AP calculus AB and BC, which are kind of slightly different courses. I believe it's anything over algebra three, but I'd need to go back and double check. It might be slightly different from that. So I can let you know.
I can imagine the benefit also spills over into the sciences where calculus for one of the AP physics tracks, calculus is a necessity.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I, I do have more. Sorry. We, at the very beginning, Ms. Ando, it's so lovely to see you here.
It's so lovely to be seen. I appreciate it.
I'm so happy you're here. Um, at the very, very beginning, we talked about the big, the PD, um, this summer, the English Language Arts Professional Learning that you were doing with, over the course of last spring, the summer. One of the questions was about how is holding integrity to high quality curriculum materials benefits students? And we are moving forward with a big implementation of wit and wisdom this year. Can you tell me a little, just like the quick overview of how those two things are connected and why that's an important step for us to take?
Absolutely. So we're doing a lot of work, reading, reading, studying, examining research around the connection between high quality instructional materials and equity. And the idea that if we give the teacher high quality instructional materials to use, that teacher can then use their energy supporting students in order to make them successful rather than writing curriculum. So the idea that we are like, like wit and wisdom or anything that's been vetted and, you know, supported, that we're able to meet more student needs by giving high quality instructional materials or using high quality instructional resources in classes. And so more and more, we want teachers to understand why integrity to the curriculum is important. Like there's, in the opportunity method, there is, you know, research around that you can gain seven months, a student can gain seven months, gain, a student who might be behind can gain seven months progress in, you know, as compared to a student who might be using a teacher-created curriculum. And so we really want teachers to understand why the curriculum benefits students. But then we also have teams of resource. We know that we have to meet lots of different student needs. So we have a resource team that's working on supports rather than modifications, if that makes sense. So the idea of how can we effectively support students to bring the students to the work rather than lower the rigor of the work to where we may perceive students might be on any given day. And so I think teachers are really embracing this idea of why fidelity to the curriculum. We're really proud of our teacher leaders and that we want people to understand why we're asking them to do the things that we're doing. So we have a very heavy resource base that we've done, research base that we've done with teachers. And we're tremendously proud of our teacher leaders who have done an exceptional job in all arenas. Does that help?
Absolutely.
Great. Thanks.
And Joe, just so you know, this is the, the big overview and you can have more questions. We will specifically have these groups back, like we'll have the SEL come in for a presentation. We'll have wit and wisdom folks coming. It's going to be a good year.
My next question was about wit and wisdom and don't answer it now, but something that would be interesting to hear about when you all come back is, of course, with any RA-developed curriculum, there's going to be some limits that it gives us. So I'd be interested to hear about what are some of those limits that you've experienced in the past year and a half or year as you've been doing it? And what are the things you're doing to mitigate some of those shortcomings that might exist in the curriculum? Because never, no product is ever.
Nope.
Perfect.
Perfect. Absolutely.
Can I tap one into that's related? I'm curious, and again, doesn't need to be answered now, how we measure the effectiveness, right? We do all this stuff. Do we, do we have a way to measure what it does? And again, maybe when you come back with that, similarly, we'd like to hear that. Go ahead, Joe. Sorry.
They'll be back for.
Mr. Max just really missed me.
I really did.
I can tell. Exactly. You'll be glad, you'll be glad to know I got a good report. I'm about eighteen months, no evidence of disease. And so I got a good report today. So you'll see a lot more.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm so very happy.
Thank you.
And then my last question is, what's D cap? I know, but what's D cap?
Decaps are required by the law and we've always had a D cap, but it was time to re-energize it. It's really about best practices and I'll let these guys talk about it.
I think, again, that best practice. So universal design for learning, really engaging. What, what does each student need to access the curriculum? And so this is for any student. The old document, as, as Dr. Gilligan said, was pretty bulky. It was multiple pages and really some of the things were a little bit outdated and not necessarily the most current research. And not, you know, something that maybe sat on a shelf. So we're hoping with this revision, I should say, I believe. Thanks to Michelle for making a copy. I think you have them in your packets as well. Much more teacher-friendly, educator-friendly that the front page for each school has a list of possibilities. So if a student is having trouble accessing the curriculum, whether it be, you know, accessing in a, I'm trying to think of some of the things on there. It's been too long since I've looked at it myself. Print, yeah, print, you know, looking at something, especially with the Chromebooks now, we have so many new technology resources that can enable students. And we did organize it under the headings of UDL. So access to engagement. That's where I should have had a copy in front of me because all the words are going out of my head. And then you'll notice on the backside of each two that we worked alongside with the, our SEL group to, to that, the behaviors that, that students are exhibiting, you know, how are we making sure that they have what they need to be present in the classroom and attend to their social emotional learning needs as well. So it's a toolbox for educators to have that list of resources. If a student maybe is, is having some trouble, it also is available to parents if they need some ideas and want to open up the conversation with their classroom teachers if they're noticing things. So really within the slides, we kind of purposely chose a, it's kind of a backpack spilling over because it really is this toolbox of so many resources. And it's, it's a sample. It doesn't mean that, that the, it is necessarily the perfect thing for every student that we really need to figure out why, what a student might need. But sometimes in the past, educators maybe thought that they couldn't, you know, allow a, you know, technology to be used. If it was a writing assignment, they had to handwrite, but maybe that was a barrier for their learning. So making sure that teachers are aware that they really have this exhaustive list of opportunities and, and available resources. It might not be the end all be all. And this is where Marcy and her team come into play to see, is there something else that maybe, you know, a student does need an IEP or a five oh four accommodation plan. But this is the universal accommodations for any student at any time.
And that's the beaut, that, that's the beauty of it, right? So if you're a regular education student, you're not on an individual education plan or you're not on a five oh four. Our IST teams, instructional support team, our student assistance team, when they meet, you have experts in the room. And now you have kind of a menu and it's not just one teacher picking off a list. You're able to collaborate, talk about it and say, you know, I think this would be really good for this student. And let's, we're going to try this. We're going to progress monitor it and revisit this as a team. this, we're gonna progress monitor it, and revisit this as a team, coming back in a couple of weeks, and see how it goes. So, very great, great job and great graphics, easy to use, nice, really nice work.
Any more questions with these folks? If not, thank you, great.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, I'm gonna pick up some time here on the superintendent's report. Thank you very much, Ms. Lockham and Ms. Ando.
Thank you.
And great news, Ms. Ando, that's great to hear.
Hey, can you share?
Just a quick update on Crest, our, one of our collaborators, we're a member of Crest and SCIM. Just, I think I mentioned it at one of our meetings, but we, they hired a new executive director, and so, the new person on board, his name was Robert Jokala. Robert was the superintendent of schools in Fitchburg, he's been there fifteen years, an accommodation of superintendent and assistant superintendent. And as I've been sitting on the board, I was part of the interview process with the finalist, I was really impressed with the finalist. But Robert comes not only with a wealth of education background, about teaching and learning, he's very strong in financial management, and finance and operations. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to working with him, and I may even have a survey for our folks from Crest, that I'll ask Marcy to send out for feedback, because he's looking to do an entry plan, and, you know, I'd like to get him over here to one of our meetings just to introduce him, so you know who he is, and he can talk a little bit about the program at Crest. And this is the best news of the night, we'll definitely have these folks in. So, you know, I came to you last year as a board, and said, we'd like to do this Greater Lawrence technical school after dark program. And I wasn't sure about the interest, gauging the interest of our students. It's that program where students will go half-day at North Andover later in the day, and then they'll go to Lawrence, who provide transportation, food, and we entered into a commitment with them. We had ten students apply from North Andover High School, and eight were accepted, and seven were attended. And that actually, I wasn't anticipating that number being... So, we'll have them in at some point, and this is just another example of providing pathways or opportunities, like, aligned with our strategic plan, to give kids the ability to pursue passions and do really well in this world. So, I'm thrilled, I can't wait to take a visit over there, I haven't been over this year yet, but I'll probably go over soon, and we'll have them back at some point. So, that's the superintendent's report for the evening.
That's great. Seven, 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 actually, oh, awesome.
All right.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Just super fascinating, I know there's a little pivot coming here.
Yeah.
One thing that I just, you know, I think that that is only possible because of the change from the trimester to the semester schedule, that, I think this is now in its third year, I could be wrong, but, you know, that's really why. But I think it's really important to, you know, again, stress and, you know, make available as, as the application process comes out for next year, because it is juniors and seniors that are available for this, correct?
It was kids going into their junior, I believe.
Right, yep, so they'd have to be current sophomores going in, so, you know, if, as, I don't know if it's a January process, or, you know, somewhere like that, but, you know, it's absolutely fantastic, and I'm thrilled to see seven students go, so.
Frankly, Mr. McDevitt, I have to give props, I should have said this earlier, the folks at Greater Lawrence have been great, but Meg Pinkston, Director of Guidance High School, and Chat really put her in charge, and she's did a great job. And I honestly, seven, I didn't, I thought we might have one or two, so seven really blew me away. And, and, and so, she did a great job promoting it, and I think we'll continue to promote it and find better ways to get the information to the younger kids.
You're here. You have an eight o'clock hard stop? So we do have a vote, but there's two things before that. So, I'll, I'll start the chair's report by doing the thing I need, we need your input on for sure, and then maybe we can, if nobody minds, we'll jump to the, to the thing we need to vote on in the Hall of Fame, so that Alyssa can participate. So with, I want to bring, so I had two items on here, but there's one that was omitted, which is the CPAC coverage for CPAC meetings. So, we're agreeing two things about that. One is we're agreeing to take turns covering that, one of us at a time, but they have requested that we have a liaison, and so, I, I think that's a good idea, I don't know if we need to formalize this or not, but basically where I'm going with this is, is somebody interested in doing that, in being our liaison.
And I'll just, I'll just clarify, I did have a member of CPAC reach out to me earlier this week, and I referred it over to Chair Brown. They are understanding that, as a committee, we'll be rotating in their, in their meetings, they're just looking to have a point person, should they need anything from the committee that they can refer to.
Makes sense. Yeah, so, so can I informally ask if anybody wants to serve in that, you know, in that role? Are you interested?
I would volunteer to do that.
Okay, is everybody happy with that?
I would second that.
All right, I don't think, we don't need to formalize that, do we?
You get to appoint as the chair.
Oh, very nice, you consider yourself appointed. Congratulations. Okay, now, along with that, I attended the, I think, the last one they had in the spring, which was either April or May. Do you want to attend the next one, and to begin your role as liaison, and then we'll...
Yes, there is a meeting on Monday, and I do plan, I will, I will be attending that one.
Okay. So you'll attend, and then we'll start rotating beyond that, okay?
And I, I hope to get a schedule so we can coordinate.
Okay, and a point of order, Mr. Chair, two of us are allowed to attend the meeting at a time.
Okay, so, um...
We're not limited to only one, with, if the occasions arise where more and more of us wanted to go.
Okay. I might talk to you offline about that, because maybe I could go to the first one, just to show support. I just need to see if I can, but I probably can, it's next Monday.
Monday at, at seven, it is online, Google Meet.
Oh, it's online, okay.
And we'll have the CPAC, like last year, we'll have the CPAC in this year, Marcy does a really great job promoting.
Yeah, and they, I don't know, I'm sure they'll talk to you about it, because they want to promote that CPAC awareness, which means, which is November, which is November, beginning of November, so they would want to get on one of the next, one of the October meetings, early October, it's actually an early October meeting, probably the earlier one, which is a thing that I brought up, who would their contact person be?
Okay, I'm running out of time, so we're gonna do that. So if everybody's okay with it, I'd like to move quickly to briefly, going out of order, I know, all business educator Hall of Fame nominees.
So, want me to give a quick update? Okay. So, last year, I was Vice Chair, and so one of the responsibilities is kind of leading the meeting for the Educator Hall of Fame Selection Committee, and we had five representatives, you know, per our policies. Ms. Broderick represented the North Andover Teachers Union as a Kittredge teacher. Alyssa Cohning represented the School Committee at Large, Mr. Landry represented administration from an HR perspective. We also had Mary Helen Paradise, who's a North Andover resident and a teacher at the high school, and of course, myself. And we went through the candidates that were presented, that kind of met all of the qualifications, and as we went through, we made the recommendation. We've already spoken with each of them, we've already kind of publicly discussed all of this, so this would be the vote of the committee to formally do this. But our recommendation was to have two recipients of the Educator Hall of Fame for this year, and that would be for Mr. Anthony Reynolds, who was an English teacher at the high school, retired, I believe, in the early nineties.
Nineteen ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven, oh, later than I thought, and passed away a couple of years ago. And Ms. Judy Negreli, who was a reading teacher and coach and mentor through many of our schools, you know, Thompson and Middle School, and for both of them, you know, as, as you kind of look through the packets, just the number of testimonials that kind of came out on the impact that these two teachers had on them, and I think for somebody to kind of state that, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years later, you know, is, is really pretty significant. So, that's the committee's recommendation, we've, we've discussed this before, and so, I guess I would move at this point to accept the Hall of Fame Selection Committee's recommendation for both Mr. Anthony Reynolds and Judy Negreli, and...
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion?
Couple of quick questions.
Sure.
When is the induction ceremony?
So, the, there's, when the professional teachers, or when the teachers reach professional teacher status, which is usually in October, we have that at the Stevens Library, we have a ceremony there, and then at the following opening of school, that recipient addresses the teachers and kind of welcomes them, and that will...
Do we have a date for the October event?
I believe we do. Greg Landry, the Director of Human Resources, is handling this event, and I think he has a couple tentative dates, he'll be probably sending that out...
Perfect.
...early next week. And it's a, again, I think Mr. McDevitt hit a key point, we had Pekin Cannon back to speak to teachers on opening day, and it was powerful. And then, you know, folks that can come back and speak will be back next year, and this event will celebrate folks that have made it to their fourth year and earned professional teaching status here in North Andover, and at the same time, we'll have the Hall of Famers honored, and they'll speak, or, you know, we'll have their family there, in the case of Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you. Anybody else, any other discussion? If not, let's move to question, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Let's go to the chair votes, yes? Passes four zero. One quick thing before you run, back to the chair's report, coverage for the Merchants Association, September, it's a Saturday, it's I think the twenty-third, and we got approved to have a, this is like, instead of our, instead of meeting at the library, the...
Community chat.
Community chat, is an alternative to that?
Right, we're gonna be at the Merchants Association.
Yeah.
Southern Merchants Association, on the fall, it's called, what is it called?
Fall Festival.
The Festival is on the common, very big kudos to Kate Rossi for getting us a spot for the school committee. And initially, she asked if folks were gonna be campaigning, I said, no, it's not like that, we're gonna have a couple members there, and it's just a chance to pop by, you know, meet your local school committee folks, they could talk about, you know, some of the big things happening in town, and...
I guess in the industry, maybe what I'll do is I'll, I'll do some sort of, I gotta figure out who can cover. I, I can only cover a little bit of it, and probably only...
If it's Michelle, she can probably help us with it.
A little poll. All right, so I guess we'll never end it, try to do it right now.
Yeah.
So, okay.
All right. Chair Brown, may I be excused?
You may be excused, thank you. Not too bad, we got you out of here at eight and three. Thanks.
If you want, I can offer, we can circle back, because I have those beginning dates for the CPAC meeting and some other dates, if you want those, just for, or I can send them to you all.
Well, let's do both of those things. What are the dates?
So the first one is this Monday, and the second one is, these are just the winter meetings, October sixteenth, November sixth, and December fifth, and those are all virtual. December fifth, they may plan a parent meetup instead, but that's the date on the book as of right now. And then, there's a couple of November activities planned, but I'll let them speak more to those, those are all around CPAC awareness, so those are the ones that are coming up, and just their participation in potentially an October meeting.
Okay, and are those all, are they all, sorry, are they always at seven?
Yes, yep.
Seven PM?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, if you send that also, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll send it to you right now.
All right, so we are, by the way, back in the chair's report now. So, opening of school, thanks to Ms. Cohning for covering for me and speaking there. And we already had an extensive report on that from Dr. Gilligan, so I don't really have anything to add unless anyone else has something they want to add about that. Okay? And then, we have the NA Educational Administrative, that's a mouthful, Administrative Assistance Successful Contract, and so, Joe, you were the cover for that. So we're done, right? I mean, we're in good shape there, right? It's done, it's signed?
Yep, we successfully negotiated the contract, it started last, late last March, was a formal request, and Dr. Mueller and I met with them several times, including, our last one was July twenty-fourth or so, I think, over the summer. We came to amicable agreement with them, and we, both parties, the union membership and the school committee, both voted to ratify it, and it's been signed and is now in effect.
Perfect, so thank you to both of you guys for getting that done, and now everybody knows. That's great. So my other two on was the CPAC, which we just covered, and, and the NAMA coverage. So hopefully, we can find a way to cover the whole day.
Yep.
On that, I know I'm, I'm probably limited to the morning, personally. And that's it for the chair's report? Unless, Joe, do you want to, do you have anything to add? Okay. School committee building updates, first, NAMS?
Yes. So, if anyone has been by NAMS, would have noticed, the fencing is up, and the project has begun. A reminder for everyone that the construction part of the project is just under nineteen million dollars, of a total like twenty-three and a half million dollar project, so it's a great amount of money to spend on this addition and then renovation. I mentioned last spring that we were concerned that there were a few items that might not be able to get included in, into the project because of cost projections, so some things were included as bid alternatives, but we got the final bids back, and all of the alternates have been included into the final project, so that's really exciting. Reminder that it's a phased project, this year, we're going to have the addition built on the back of the building, right where the cafeteria, next to the cafeteria, and then next year, we'll be, we'll utilize that addition to then renovate other spaces in the building and update the mechanical systems. And the last part will be auditorium getting updated with new rug, new, new curtain, new lights, and new handicap accessible ramp, or lift?
Lift.
Lift. So that's really exciting for that space. Fencing is up, and the site work has been started, the access road has been, traffic's being rerouted around appropriately to keep everyone safe. It's important to note that the safety of students is of utmost importance, and the, the construction firm and the administration and all people are doing all the things they need to do, and then some to make sure that students stay safe, because they are in the building while the project is happening. This includes, we've had, they had to make important and necessary updates to evacuation plans, which they have done, we had to reconfigure some doors to make sure that students have egress out of the building, now that you can't go out through the cafeteria necessarily, so thank you to the fire department and Mr. Gonsovs and everyone else for making sure that those plans are continually examined and updated to make sure our students are safe to be in the building. And the project completion date, if everything stays on track, is January twenty-twenty-five, so that's really exciting, it's just over a year and a half from now. And lastly, we are going to have a formal groundbreaking ceremony, we're eyeing September nineteenth at four-thirty, there is a regular middle school building committee meeting at four, and then we're gonna do the event right afterwards at four-thirty. If that doesn't work out because of rain, because we want to do it outside in the, in the construction area, we will push it to October third, I think is the next meeting that we would have. And all the school committee members are invited, as well, as well as all the elected officials and for the town, and we'll be sending out that notification to all the people very soon.
Joe's done a great job working with Michelle McHugh. You know, Lori Berzlaugh is a big part of the committee from the town side, but Joe and Michelle are really heading up the groundbreaking, and we'll have, you know, all the folks, we'll get an invitation from Joe and myself next week on behalf of the district to attend. We'll have Brian Fraser there, we'll have photographer, we'll have press, we'll have a program of brief speakers, you know, brief, and we'll have the principal along with, and we'll hopefully be able to have students, I think that's the cool part, so...
An extra-large, perfect hat for...
Dr. Gilligan. An extra, extra-large helmet for Dr. Gilligan, I might have to wear my scooter helmet. Anyway, so, we're looking forward to it.
Great, thank you. And Trish?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's really only one thing, we met last Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday, I think it was Wednesday, and really, just the whole gist of that was, we're very early in the MSBA process, and, you know, the, the key deliverable that we had to hit really kind of in the month of September was regarding the OPM, and so, we moved forward with that, and we will...
I'm sorry, OPM?
It's basically the project manager.
The project manager.
Yeah.
Very important, I mean, that's important, that that's happening, that really means this is...
Yeah, it's going, yeah. And so, that, that has moved forward, and that's it, and then...
No, that's the most important part.
Yeah.
Because we're advertising for proposals for OPM.
Yep.
And I don't think we've had a chance to say it publicly, but Jim and I had a chance to go to the MSBA this summer, to get the feasibility study approved, I think we put that in the, one of the communications about the start of school, and we'll have our newsletter coming out soon, we'll put it in there again, just so folks know.
Yeah, and I got, I got an email about that, about that being approved.
Yep.
So, okay, thank you. So that's school building committee updates, and now... So, okay, thank you. Uh, so that's, uh, School Building Committee Updates, and now we're into old business. We already voted on the Hall of Fame, and that was it for old business. So now new business. Overnight student trips, we got, we all got a packet on that. Um, wow, it's a big packet.
Yeah, so what I'd ask the committee to do is, um, Pam Lathrop had a chance to connect with Lorraine Marks, um, this week, uh, and they met to go over this. Um, this is a function, uh, handled by the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. Um, so Pam was going to be here tonight to say, speak to some of these trips, but what I'd ask you to do is, uh, look through them. Um, you have them electronically as well, and, um, if you have any questions, please send them to Pam or Michelle McQ, and we'll get those answers. We'll get them out to you, and then we'll come back at the next meeting, uh, with all that information.
I'm just quickly looking at them, right? A lot of these are trips that we've done for years, aren't they? Repeat visits to DC and, and, um, that one jumped out at me. Um, I think there's DECA stuff in here as well.
Yep.
Yeah. So, a lot of these are, are sort of, uh, historical things we've done for years, right? And I know my kids experienced several of these, and they were great, so. Are there, are there brand-new ones in here, too?
Uh, I, I think the one that I noticed, and, um, again, Pam was going to speak to them, but I think we had, the, the one that, uh, really caught my eye was the Belize trip, and I think that she was in last year to present-
Yep.
-on that, but I think that's, that's one that stands out. I'll find out if there are any others. Okay.
So, um, I feel like every other year they do the German trip, um, and is there a French trip this year? I, that may be in every other year as well.
I think one of the French trips is, uh, I asked, uh, Ms. Darnon the other day, because I think she's chaperoned. I think that's in twenty-four, um, that trip. Uh, I'll find out though.
Okay. Usually we try to do them all somewhat together.
Yeah, there's a Spanish one in here, is that right?
There's Spanish, but there isn't French or German. Um, and usually those students are starting to at least meet and put down deposits on, on those.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm pleased with the way that we've been able to bring these forward. It, it, over the years, it, uh, credit Mr. McDevitt, he's really helped to get, get these, um, all done at one time. Um, you know, and mostly, um, having them all together allows us to gauge interest, whether students, you know, are interested in something that we'd give the green light to.
What do you mean by, by approving them all at once? Is that what you mean, by having them all together?
By doing them early?
Doing them early, so that they could find out, because, you know, what happens in most districts, and it, it, it used to happen here quite a bit, is the reality's this, like, airfares can, you guys know, they can go up and down, and when people are judging interest, um, often times we've had to come to the committee, in the old days, a while back, um, and say, look, if, if you don't approve it tonight, we're not sure what the cost will be. And so, you know, we always have probably voted to suspend the rules, um, and made a decision what was in the best interest of the kids, but it's just easier to do this way. Um, so, um, you know, I know Pam has a really good handle on this, um, and I think Lorraine did a great job getting answers to questions. Um, so a lot of them are standing trips, and, um-
There are two of them that are sooner than later, but I think we'll be okay if we can do the vote on them at the next meeting, but there are two in November.
Yeah, so any questions you have, send them to Pam and Michelle, and we'll get the answers.
Yep. And, and one other quick thing, like, I, I know there's a, the DECA trip in here, right? And so they qualify at a, um, I, I think like a weekend tournament. It's like, uh, New England's, I, I think it's New England's, on whether or not they can go, and then it's like, okay, so when's the next school committee meeting, and then we basically have to suspend the rules in order for them to go, to take the trip. So this way, we're approving it now in the likely event that they qualify, and we have such a great real products program, right? We're kind of saying that, you know, if they don't need to take the trip, they don't have to take it, but, um, it's approved, and when they know that they qualify, they're able to go home and book the appropriate flights to get those deals.
Yeah, it's, it's, it, it, those, those competitions are a lot, like, just if you think about, like, the NC two A March Madness, like, you go, you compete, and then you find out that day that you're gonna, you know, you can go somewhere else.
No, no, I'm very familiar. I think all three of my kids did it, and the, and the, um, uh, in fact, I, I mod- I, I was a moderator at Merrimack College for, for one of those, um-
Yeah.
-one of those first level, uh, regionals, I guess they call it.
Yeah. We, we just want to make sure that, as soon as they know they qualify, they can-
Yeah, makes sense.
-start to move forward.
Okay.
Very good point, Mr. McDevitt.
Yeah, that's, makes a lot of sense. All right. Um, okay. So that will come up for a vote next time. Right? Okay. Uh, it's time, wow, we caught up. Almost, uh-
We're early now.
Three minutes early now. Um, any public comment? Again, nothing, uh, well, let me just, I guess, I hadn't received anything before the meeting. I don't know that I really need to check for during the meeting, but there's nothing new here.
You can't. Actually, they have to be in the room for-
That's right.